Hello and welcome to Thursday Night Talk. This is the show where we discuss the weak in Humboldt, the local issues and the local personalities with the local personalities. I'm Calvi Fried and I'll be your local host for the next hour. Coming up on November 5th, the presidents of Eureka's Ward 4 face a choice between incumbent Scott Bauer and challenger Lucky Thassavak. And joining us for the next hour is Lucky Thassavak. His opponent Scott Bauer will be here in the second half of the show. Lucky is the owner of Lucky Star Realty and Eureka Skate Shop in Henderson Center. He became president of the Rotary Club of Eureka back in June and served on several other boards, including the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods, the Cutton Ridgewood Student Foundation and the NorCal Lausanne Foundation. He also runs a traveling footy page with his wife Bowes and Thong. Welcome Lucky.
Hi, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me here.
I'm glad you are. I live in Eureka, so everything that happens in Eureka affects me. And it is the municipal seat of the county. So what goes on in Eureka tends to have an effect on everywhere else in the county, whether people live within the city lines or not. So I feel like this is an important race and I'm glad that you're here and willing to discuss kind of your candidacy and why you think you deserve the coveted spot of fourth ward leader.
Right. Basically, I grew up here in Eureka since the age of six. My parents and I, we were refugees from Laos because of the Vietnam War. Communism took over my country and my parents wanted, they risked their lives and me to have a better future for their children. I know it was in Las Vegas, I'll post my story of how they crossed the Mekong River to Thailand and we were being shot at in the middle of the night. They gave me some kind of sleeping pill or something to keep me quiet so that we don't get shot. And then we were stuck there in Thailand for a few years and then we were sponsored by a church in Ohio to come to America. And they had to interview for that and it was a tough life. First few months, Ohio, you know, there's snow. My parents have never seen snow before. It was up to their knees. Fortunately, they knew some relatives in California and that happened to be Eureka, California. They thought California was going to be sunny, so we hopped on the bus four days, four nights. And then we got to Eureka and we stayed with the relatives for about a year or so. And then my parents got their own room at this hotel by Bucksport. I like to call it the Roche Hotel. All of us refugees end up there. I think it's still there. Yeah, because we were poor and we had nothing and my parents stayed on welfare for only three months because they wanted to get a start on earning a living for the family. And so my childhood, I think it was tough in the sense that I'd never saw my parents during the daytime because they worked double shifts. I was left early and came home late at night. My mom, but my mom made sure that we had food ready. She prepared meals in the middle of the night. Oh my God, I'm crying a lot. And then I couldn't speak a lick of English. I attended Alex Burney Schools, Lafayette, Zane, Winship, Eureka High. Graduated in 1998 and then I went to Humboldt State. I got my engineering degree and my English degree. I promised my second grade teacher that I would write a story about us coming to America and, you know, surviving that. And then, so I tried to leave several times, but I never left. I figured this is, I grew up here. This is the best place to raise my children. My wife and I have four children in all ages. We have a third grader, fifth grader, a middle schooler in eighth grade and a junior in high school. And because of what I went through in my childhood, I, my wife and I, we make sure to be there for our children, to be present and to be involved in all the schools that our kids are in. That's why we volunteer in the PTAs and the after-school fundraising. We're all over the place and I make sure to promote the schools and the PTAs and the fundraising all over my social media. I'm all about uplifting the community. That's why we have a footy page. We want to promote local restaurants, local businesses that we go to. We already do that, you know, that's just part of our nature of being involved in the community. And I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. I grew up using their services as a teenager. I skateboarded as a kid. I think that helped me stay off the drugs and all that negative stuff. Because I had skateboarding and the teen center, it was Girls Club, they provided a skate route for me and my brother to go to. So that's why I'm giving back by being on that board and serving on that board. And I'm also the Rotary Club president for the Rotary Club of Eureka. We sponsor the youth exchange programs and that's very important to me too, to share culture and exchange. To have our students learn about, there's a world out there besides here in America. And when we have exchange students come over, we learn about their culture too and what they're going through in their world. So that's, that's a good thing about Rotary is that we, we host exchange students. We also give out grants to nonprofits in the area. We've given out so many. And our latest project for our centennial year last year was we gave $100,000 to Jefferson Center to help build their new kitchen. And next week, we are going to, our meeting is actually at the Jefferson Center on Monday at noon. If you guys would like to join us to check out what the kitchen looks like now that it's been upgraded. It's been a year. So we can't wait to see that. And so, yeah. So I guess your original question, right? Why am I running? I'm running because I care about my community. I love this place we call Eureka Humboldt County. I call it home. I want to make it better. I want to take care. I want to help with the issues like homelessness, drug abuse. I want to bring in more businesses. I want to support our local businesses, make them thrive. With my background in real estate and engineering and my other careers, I think I have a good set of tools that I can contribute on the board. I can read contracts. I'm good with math. You know, all of that. So, and I just want to see our community be successful and thrive. When I was a kid, I remember seeing when they put in the Bay Show Mall, like in 1988 or 89. And I was really excited and during my childhood, during my teenage years, the mall was the place to be, you know, the Bay Show Mall. We had trick or treating there and everything. All the, all the shopping spots were filled up. And now look at the mall, you know, it's like empty almost besides from a few anchor stores. So I want to help with that too. And that's a concern of the community too. And I think one, one thing about me is that I like to listen to my neighbors, my community, what the issues are. And I would like to bring it up to the council and help to see if we can address those issues going forward.
So one thing that I've noticed with successful people, for people who have already been on the city council, maybe they did a term or two or longer, is their ability to negotiate with people who have alternative views. Because a true representation of Eureka will not be solidly any one way. It'll be actually a representation of the people who live here, which is a very varied. There's varied viewpoints such as, you know, what to do about the houseless. There's no doubt that everybody's like, yes, I want to help the houseless, though it's how do you help the houseless? Do you put them on a barge and send them out into the middle of the ocean? Do you ship them off somewhere? What would you say to, to both? One, I do want to hear what you plan on how to help the, not just the houseless, but those who live in houses who are so close to being houseless. Because this economy is absolutely bonkers, though also how you plan on coping with those who may, they may put the kibosh on plans that you have, or they may have alternative views. There may be massively differing opinions, especially from people in the city who like to come to city council meetings and just be like, you're a terrible person and they'll tell you that. And I'm curious how you're going to deal with that.
Well, I think I come from a different perspective than maybe past council members. Because as you can see, my family was kind of houseless when we arrived in Eureka. And we had to stay with relatives and until we found this like one bedroom apartment in the Roche Hotel that I call the Roche Hotel. I mean, not in any negative sense, but it's, it's just the way it is. And so we've been in that situation and I mean, I understand, you know, how that could be. And my parents struggled. They worked double shifts just so that they can save for that down payment for their first home, you know? And when they, when they tried to buy the first home, there was this thing called credit that they had to do. So then they, they were rejected the first time. And so they had to buy a car to build their credit. So they learned about how to buy a house, the home buying process that way, the hard way. So I think to help the houseless in our community, we just need to identify why, why they're in that situation. Is it because of mental health? Is it because of drug abuse? And I think we need to approach it like with multiple agencies that can help deal with that, with those situations, if that's the case. I think it's going to be an individual, case by case, for each individual, for each houseless person. I think, I mean, I support Betty Chen and what she does in her own way to help the houseless, to feed them and to provide, you know, those, the tiny home village that she proposed. I think anything we can do to help would be great. Yeah, it's going to take a multi-agency, multi, like I can, you know, county, city. I mean, I've been looking up on this issue and it's not just a Eureka thing. It's a most, like a multiple cities, city or county or state thing, even, even like Portland and San Francisco. I've been there. There's lots of homeless there too. We just need to all work together and focus on, on it and, you know, continue to help solve the problem with the houseless situation.
Well, no, no, I mean, I asked a multifaceted question there, so it's hard to answer everything. When I'm like, here's 10 questions in one. The, the other aspect of that question was how are you going to, how are you going to get along with people of differing viewpoints?
Oh, right, right. Okay. Got it. I didn't remember that. Well, I mean, okay, with me, I did, I'm a registered Democrat, but I'm more, I think, I, when I see an issue or a situation, I want to look at both views, you know, I try to learn both sides of the issue and understand this person's perspective, that person's perspective. And then combine it and do my own research for the facts before I, you know, continue with my decision on any issue, not just the houseless issue. Like let's say something is controversial right now for Eureka is Measure F. Most of my friends that are business owners are for Measure F and the cosigners are my friends for that measure. You know, Mike Munson, he's a Rotarian president. Michelle Constantine, she's on the board of Boys and Girls Club. But I did do my research and the facts and everything. And, you know, I mean, that's a multi-faceted, multi-level issue in itself, right? I believe that what they are trying to do is, there's some good aspects about what they're trying to do, which is to take, to care about our business community, you know, if there's parking that's been taken away, then how are customers going to arrive there? I think in a bigger city, that might be easy, but in a rural area like this, the public transportation is not up to par yet where everybody can just hop on the tram or, you know, what do they have in San Francisco? That rail, rail system, right? That little rail car that takes you there. Yeah. So I mean, until we have that, you know, robust public transportation, it's going to be hard on those local business owners downtown if parking is taken away. I agree with that. And, and they addressed the fact that there needs to be more multi-level housing for all levels of income, not just the, the most needy. There's middle income families that need housing too. Just because you earn middle income does not mean you can afford to rent a house or buy a house. And I agree with that. So in those respects, I agree with them on those. But as far as the execution part, you know, I think, I don't, I don't agree with that. And there's the side where the city has already, you know, laid all these plans out for affordable housing and they'll lose millions of dollars in grants and grant funds for the developers if Measure F were to pass. I did reach out to the city manager, my team did. And, you know, if Measure F were to pass, they would do, they would go through some kind of litigation. Because there's, there's a bunch of California codes that would negate what Measure F is trying to do. So I did do my homework in this before I came to the conclusion that I would say no on F. Although I support their motivations to, to support our local businesses. I was torn at first. I mean, there, there's a great example right now of your question of differing views. Most of my friends, my business friends are for F. And then I have friends that are against it, but I have to look at the facts. I have to look at if it's going to make sense for our community, for our city to move forward. And I'm sorry for my friends, but I'm going to say no on F for this one. Maybe if they, if they revise it, if they come down the pipe in a couple of years with a different version, I might agree with it, but yeah. So that, there's a great example of what your question is trying to say. I mean, the Measure F thing, it's like tearing our community, like, you know, an opinion there.
Right. Well, you are running in a particular, I feel like every ward in Eureka is very, very different from each other. Very similar, but also very different. And Ward 4, for those who are unaware, is kind of the, the bottom of the Samoa Bridge out to Target. I love that we have to use Target as a landscape, but it is out by Target, which, and then I think inland a bit.
Yeah, up to Sequoia, Sequoia Park. It actually ends right there, Sequoia Park, where the water tank is.
So just go up Myrtle.
No, not Myrtle. This, south, yeah, south towards Sequoia Park. You know Sequoia Park, right? With the zoo and everything, the square. Yeah. And so that's where I did my kickoff, actually barbecue kickoff was at the gazebo at Sequoia Park. Because it's in my ward. And also, I mean, my friend Michelle Constantine, when she ran for mayor, she had her kickoff at the gazebo too. But that, there was a controversial issue a couple of years ago where the city tried to make that a one-way, you know, street, recognize it as a two-way where you can go either way. And, I mean, the community in Cutton, they were upset about it because they thought it would create congestion, you know? People going to work in the morning. And then there were safety concerns with Washington School right there with the, with the students crossing, having to cross over. So, so I did, I did speak up on that one. I went to the city council meeting and I spoke up against it because of the safety concerns with the students and the congestion and it would, it would have on, in the area. Yeah. So I mean, that goes to what you were saying. There's different opinions and everything. And I know that we have a Baja Zoo bike trail happening and I am, I am all for that. But I think we need to consider input from our community too, not just push, push something into a community and not have feedback or input. I think with the one-way thing around Sequoia Park, there were like 90 something percent of the neighbors were against it and the city was still trying to push it forward. And when they did their survey, you know, of how many traffic count there were, they did it during the summertime when school was not in session. So I mean, that doesn't make sense, you know, when, when you're trying to put a one-way in and you're doing it at a different time when it's not busy. So I believe that that's part of the reason why I'm running is for my, my platforms are transparency, community and accountability. I believe that the city needs to be more transparent in what they're trying to do in our community. I mean, I think they need more feedback from the community. And when they receive that feedback, they should, they should take that feedback into consideration. Like right now, they're doing a survey for recreation in our area. I've given many feedbacks, but I haven't seen any of my input in any of their survey reports.
Right. I keep being part of these things and then I'm like, please no more, like, yes, more murals, but please use other funds for murals, use the art funds for more murals. And somehow we keep getting more murals and the streets look the same. So I, you know, I'm like, I'm tired of potholes. Thank you for the mural, but my, they're going to get popped one day because of this pothole. So I, I hear you on that one. It's, it's kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's another major concern too, is our roads, our roads are not being maintained as, as they should be, right? I think like the last election round, they passed Measure M, which is supposed to help maintain the roads and everything. But I mean, where's the accountability? Where's all that money going to? And how come our roads still look the same, our streets still look the same with the potholes and everything? And now the county is trying to pass Measure O, which puts another 1% tax on the citizens of Eureka, making it like over 10% those tax. And it's, it's, it's really hard on them as it is with the economy and everything, you know? People are trying to buy groceries, everything gets expensive. So I'm against Measure O. I'll come out right out and say it, you know, just for my Eureka friends. I'm against Measure O because of, it'll put, it'll make it harder for them to buy groceries, you know, or, or whatever they're trying to do for the household. I appreciate that the county wants to fix our roads, but that's a general tax. It's not a special tax. So who, like, they could technically use their funds somewhere else if they choose to. So I, you know, if they, if they're serious about going, that going towards our roads, then they should make it a special tax, not a general tax. So that's my stance on Measure L. Wait, did I miss the whole question? Did I, did I just say?
No, I mean, I'm not even sure I really got to ask the question there. It was just like, you know, Ward 4 has its own unique issues. And then we went down the trail of transparency, which, you know, though, though.
Oh, one thing.
On Ward 4 because it's a unique area that I'm, I'm in Ward 5, which I feel like Measure F would affect Ward 5 or is specifically aimed to affect more of Ward 5 than it is Ward 4. Whereas I feel like Ward 4 is, there's a lot of, I mean, it's a big area. Every single word has its own dynamics within it.
Oh, well, one more thing that you described, when you described the Ward 4, boundaries between Target and the Samoa Bridges. That's called the Bridge District and I did meet with the Neighborhood Watch Group there. And their concern is not being heard by the current city council representative about hearing their concerns in the neighborhood about the homeless situation, about the drug use in the area. They tried to contact, you know, the current person, but he's never been to any of their Neighborhood Watch meetings until the one that I went to. But, so that was one of their concerns is to, to be heard and at least address their concerns. So if I were to be on the council, the difference I would say is I would be on the ground, listening to my neighbors, listening to the concerns of my constituents in Ward 4 and try to bring those issues and concerns to the city and address it, you know?
Yeah. Well, the people that live, you know, near, that live in Cutton have very different concerns than the people who live in the Bridge District. And everybody who's been through the Bridge District or has been, you know, again, near the bridge or Target, understands completely what I'm saying when there are some severe issues happening down there that do feel
Definitely, definitely.
ignored and overlooked because I don't think anybody knows or understands what to do with it. And I don't think that means that, you know, things, there should still be attention given to the, those in a better spot in life. And I would consider that Cutton area. You can, you can just see, you can take a random house from the bridge area and a random house near the zoo. And it's all the same district, but you can see the vast differences in quality.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see what you're saying. Yeah, there's different issues, but it's the same ward, but it's kind of different dynamics and issues. And then, oh, I forgot one. I was going to mention something when you were talking. Yeah, the, the Bridge District, their concerns are the, oh yeah. Okay. So there's this, this 18-unit complex that, that was bought by Arcata Partner, Partner, Partner House, I think it was called, Arcata. Arcata House Partnership, yes. And the Yuruk tribe, they, they went in on it together and they, it's basically a complex for the houseless. You know, each, each individual can stay there until they can get off their feet and continue on with being productive members of society. When, when they put that in, the manager of the Arcata House Partnership, she, she promised the neighbors that there would be 24-hour staff, there would be security onsite and people that staffed that with the mental health and the drug abuse there. But in the last two years, that has not been the case. So she did not keep her promise. And there's been drug like sales and abuse going on in and around that complex, which is bringing those negative, negative aspects to the neighborhood. And they've tried to contact her many times and she has not been responsive. But I think the city is a partnership in that too, because it's in the ward, in the city. So the, the city should step up and, you know, maybe have her, have that manager be more responsible and follow through with what she promised the neighborhood. That was one of the concerns I brought to the city council meeting, I think a couple, a few weeks ago, after meeting with the Bridge District.
It's tough because there's so many, you know, when you consider a neighborhood, there's like a pocket of neighborhood. There's the overall ward and it's very difficult to, to manage every little thing. Because I'm sure that those in Cutton don't even care that much. I mean, everybody cares about what's happening in that one spot, but those in the Bridge District definitely very much so care. And I think everybody should care about that because it does affect everybody. Though we are.
Oh, oh, sorry.
We're kind of near the end of your chat. So you have a few minutes. You can use it however you'd like to. We're not going to, for those who usually listen to the show, we usually have a round robin, but because this is an interesting format, because everyone's busy. You get, you get a couple of minutes to kind of just let people know whatever you want them to take away with, with them. Either why they should vote for you or why those who can vote for you should vote for you. And yeah, just what you'll be able to, or anything. You can talk about a dog.
Right. Okay. One more area in my ward where I live in is like the Myrtle, Myrtle Avenue and McFarland. The, the city is planning for a roundabout there and slow traffic. And also to help with the Baja Zoo Trail going through the neighborhood. I support that and everything, but the neighbors are just concerned that it will bring in more homeless, houseless people into the area. We've had issues where they're camping in the bushes already in our neighborhood there. So my concern would be just for safety reasons, maybe install some light or have a safety officer walk there once in a while to make sure it's safe. But yeah, people, the citizens of Ward 4 should vote for me because I'm a local person. I grew up here. I care about our community with the examples that I've already been doing in the past, being on all these nonprofit boards, helping our local schools, even the schools that my children don't even go to. I donate prizes. I reach out. I volunteer at their carnivals. I care about our community. And I will bring a more different perspective to the board than what is currently on the board. I think I will make my, my, the board more complete, more diversified. And I'm just an average guy who grew up here. And I'm just an average uh guy who grew up here and I just want to give back to our community, to our city. And make it thrive and just uh you try my best to make it happen and I will listen. To the citizens of Eureka in my ward and Eureka overall and. Uh my my slogans, my platforms are community, accountability and transparency. And anybody can reach me anytime via text or email. Um and I'll respond to them within twenty-four hours or less if I were chosen as the City Council.
Awesome, thank you so much, Lucky, for joining us today. And we will be right back after a quick break and. We have Scott Bauer who will be joining us, uh you're listening to Thursday Night Talk. Welcome back to Thursday Night Talk, I've got Scott Bauer here joining us. And uh we just spoke to Lucky Fafizik. Symthong and now we're gonna be talking to Scott Bauer, who I believe is the incumbent for Ward four. Um we've got, I've got a little bit of a bio that I'll give for you, Scott, and then we'll get right into this lovely chat. Um Scott's day job is scientist with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. He was on the California Association of Professional Sciences Board of Directors for over a decade. He's been a resident of Eureka for over twenty years and a little over eleven years in the fourth ward. He's married to a nurse who works at Saint Joe's and has two kids. He was elected to the City Council in twenty twenty, is now running for reelection in twenty twenty-four. Welcome the incumbent Scott Bauer to the stage.
Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
I appreciate you being here. I just spoke with Lucky for a bit about um. His concerns, we. Uh I I tried to, for those listening or watching on on channel twelve or on Access Humboldt's channels. Tried to express what fourth ward entails because the whole ward system can be very confusing for people. So we went over how there's the Bridge District up to essentially the gazebo at the zoo.
Um yeah, more or less, I mean, you know, I I like to tell people um. I also represent the most uh oysters of any uh City Council person in the state of California because the ward. Goes out into the bay. And it wraps around over to Cash and Carry. Um so there's a few residents way out there um along the one-on-one cor- safety corridor. And then it comes back and goes over to Harrison, so it's a really odd shaped ward. Um uh but all the wards are because they're all based off population.
I love how we still call it Cash and Carry when it's hasn't been Cash and Carry for like ever. But I still call it Cash and Carry too.
My bad.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I can't remember the real name of it, it's still Cash and Carry in my heart. So there's. You've you've been on the City Council for four years and what, so first off, uh. You have proven at least that you can get along with people of a a various. Um of varied personalities. And that you you don't seem that taken aback by people shouting during City Council meetings about how you're terrible. Or or anything like that, so that's, we don't have to get into that part about how you'd handle it because obviously you just handle it. Uh though the the other factor is is that Eureka is changing, uh you joined during the pandemic. And how have you seen the growth from twenty twenty till now? Let's start there.
Yeah, it it it's a really great question, you know, um. Gosh, the yeah, the pandemic was a um a really interesting time to join the council and I I I still walked and. And knocked on doors and and met lots of people. Um you know, just op- operating and that kind of keeping space, but um. I've been walking and knocking, um you know, this time around too and. It's really interesting to see the dynamics change. I see a lot of people, retired people. That have sold their place in Southern California, San Francisco, bought a place, fixed it up. They want to be closer to their kids. And I don't know if people understand that kind of change and and it's it's fascinating because, you know, good people. They love our community, they're really happy to be here, but it's changing. That that kind of dynamic is something. Um I think we've all known, I mean, we see that the population of Humboldt County aging. I mean, it's it's a really skewed uh graph when you look at it. And how do we address that, you know, um taking care of our aging population? Um young people as well are moving into Eureka um for the affordability and it's still. You know, just like across the real estate market, right? Affordability. Not sure that's the the correct term, but compared to the rest of the state or the nation, it's still, you know, somewhat doable. So people want to live here, um want to be a um a part of Eureka and it's exciting but challenging as you know. With the current housing issue, you know, having enough housing. Um we've really tried hard um to to do that, approve of of places to build housing. Making it easy for eighty years to be built. Um and yet, you know, talk to a developer, you talk to a contractor, materials are still expensive. How do we do that, given the state of of of, you know, inflation and all those things and so. It's really interesting being a part of that and um trying to figure out creative solutions to. Getting enough housing for the people that want to live here, because we are like essentially a refuge when it comes to heat, you know. If you walk in Friday night market, you run into people from ready. People escaping the heat, you know, and so people see this as a place they want to be, which is great. Um but it makes for a lot of challenges when it comes to keeping people housed.
So that brings us on to the lovely topic of Measure F. What are your views there?
Uh I'm um completely against it, you know, it's doesn't. Doesn't increase housing, I just got a flyer in the mail, that's probably a lot of us did, um. You know, saying that keep bringing up the Jefferson School, which we do not own. Which we had tried to buy at one time and um we were, you know, outcompeted. Um it just simply doesn't do that. And I've had a lot of discussions with people about parking, you know, a lot of. The concern for for most people is parking and, you know, um. Get it, um for a lot of us that are, uh you know, for a lot of our older population, that's a concern. But, you know, we have to kind of balance that with what what do people need, you know, we need, we need, we need houses for people. For for working class people and we have to, there's trade-offs in everything we do. Um you know, as a society. And so Measure F does not do that, does not help us. And um I hope we can keep doing what we're doing, you know, we have some housing projects that. Should break ground next year. Um and hopefully, you know, cons- uh construction materials go down in price and people will start building eighty years, but. Yeah, I hate the divisiveness of of things uh like this, it's unfortunate, um. I've never, you know, getting, being involved in politics a long time through labor and other things. I just, I I wish we didn't, people didn't take an opportunity to divide us with issues, make issues that. Um you know, don't really help us as a society and. Divide us as a as a human beings, it frustrates me and and that's one of the reasons why. I I do this, do this job is to. Hopefully find middle ground, you know, pragmatic solutions to our problems. It's just unfortunate that we're in this state, but. We'll see what the voters think come November fifth.
I'm curious a a bit about your background because it it will. Backgrounds tell a lot about the, about what people care about. And so you've been here for twenty years, uh where did, where were you before then?
Oh, actually, I've been um twenty years in Eureka, eleven in the ward and over thirty now. In in Humboldt County, so I moved to Humboldt from Huntington Beach, California. Um as a twenty-one-year-old to go to Humboldt and and stayed like so many Humboldt grads do. You know, so I came from super urban, you know, to this beautiful green. Um you know, paradise that I call, you know, I think of 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 Humboldt. And um so growing up, going to the beach, fishing, surfing, all that stuff, you know, um. This, I could never see myself living away from the coast, that's for sure, the ocean is such a huge part in my life and our family's life, but. Quite a drastic change, um but I knew it was home from day one, you know, just loving the outdoors. And um having so much opportunity, you know, minutes from home means a lot to to me um. To be in touch with nature and Huntington Beach didn't exactly offer a lot of uh. Green, you know, environment, so it was great to come here.
Lots of beaches, not a lot of trees. So you've been out here a while and. You've. Probably experienced or at least seen some of the hardships that Eureka has experienced. In the past several decades, there there have definitely been downward turns for the economy. And and right now I get very confused trying to describe the economy out here to say family who lives elsewhere, just. Is it good, is it bad? It's all over the place. That there are people who are thriving in this and there are people who are absolutely not, and it seems very random. Almost about like who, which. You know, which field of expertise is successful, uh what to do, and it's hard to even like. Tell somebody going to school that wants to stay in Eureka or the Eureka area, like what they should study if they actually want to be successful here at this point. Because it's just that much all over the place, like the economy is very hard to pinpoint for me. And I'm just, I'm just curious what uh you would. What advice would you give to somebody who who wants to thrive in Eureka right now and what? Who who isn't? And also, yeah, like both of that, what to somebody who would be new here and somebody who's struggling out here, what advice would you give to both of them?
Well, you know, first I, I like to tell people, um like I told my kids, you know, when they. They see, um you know, us trying to redevelop our our community, I say, you know. You gotta remember why E- Eureka and this area kind of came to being, you know, it would, it's a. I like to say it's a utilitarian development, like we were built to, you know, for timber. Commercial fishing and initially mining, supplying miners in in the goldfields on the Trinity River, so. It wasn't built, you know, was built a long time ago for for getting out the resources. And so that's the first thing we have to understand and that's why like all of this change that um. You know, we'd like to see take place, beautification, all those things, right? That takes time, you know, and I have trained stress of people, gotta remember where we came. Um but when it comes to like what kind of advice, you know, uh for people that are coming here, going to school. You know, we're gonna see um, you know, the wind farm, um of renewable energy come. You know, and there's gonna be a lot of jobs associated with port, port development. Um port maintenance, you know, maintaining these things, building these 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 turbines. Um the electricity, the 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 power, the utilities, you know, to get it out of here. We can't possibly consume all the energy that's going to be produced from the the wind, the fuel that's offshore, so. Those opportunities, you know, are are real. Um you know, we landed the cable from from Asia here in Arcata, which is, you know, talking about high speed. Um you know, communications, there's opportunities in that field, there's a possibility of. Of the, you know, fish farm um coming. And all those things are like, you know, and and of course, Cal Poly, you know, just talked about a hundred million dollar building, you know, for engineering and. So, you know, it's education, it's renewable energy. And and not just the building and maintenance of renewable, you know, energy, but all the technology that goes with that, like. It's a real challenge to to put things in three thousand feet of water, so. There's a lot of opportunity for engineering, for um, you know, electrical workers and. It it's gonna be amazing with the next five to ten years, what um, what, how Humboldt has transformed. I really think, and so, you know, I think technology, you know, the hub of uh tech. Renewables, um you know, hopefully fish farming, um and and all these things. Are gonna really transform Humboldt County and what we do and, you know, how we live. Um it should be pretty, pretty fascinating and and there will be a lot of opportunities, and again. Things take time, you know, and then we want it to happen tomorrow. Um and I'm uh, I'd like to see us, you know, get renewable energy going faster than we we possibly can, but. Uh I I tell people, you know, someday we're gonna look back and and we're gonna think. Maybe, you know, uh uh look back on the days and say, I wish we were like we used to be. Because we're probably gonna transform into something like Santa Barbara. You know, there's gonna be a a lot of wealth generated by these industries and and people moving here. And we're gonna transform is how do we do it smart, right? How do we make sure we take care of our people?
Um you know. Like, how do you integrate people who have no knowledge of wind turbines into a world that revolves around them? There, whereas, where are the educational? Opportunity is gonna come in, which people need to start preparing now if they want those high yielding jobs in the future. Where where are those educational opportunities? It's kind of one of my big questions, especially when it comes to the wind farm. Because I know a lot of people who would love to make some of that money. Uh and and those types of jobs are uh can be very high risk. Uh assuming that you're, if you're on the blue collar level, not on the white collar level. Uh and and either one, how do you even move from the blue collar level to the white collar level? And how do you take those who live here in Eureka to that level? When, where's, where's the opportunity there instead of just shipping people in from elsewhere in the country? That won't need to happen for some positions or some parts of it, people will move here for for the job opportunities. Because they will pay that high and it will be an incentive. Though, how do you get people who live here in a position where they will be accepted over out those who are outside of the area?
No, you know, um it's it's almost a reflection of of what's going on across society, right? Contractors, electricians, like, you know, these jobs that can can pay well. We have a shortage right now. I don't know if people are aware, trying to get an electrician right now is a real challenge, you know, so there's. You know, I know the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, right? They have friendships and they and they're trying to figure that out, right? How do we build? Uh um, you know, um educational opportunity to get people trained. Um you know, construction is the same way, those are the jobs that we need across society. And I'm always scratching my head, like, how do, what do we do with that? You know, we have CR, right? And CR is. You know, have has it, it's gonna have a really great fire academy, so we're planning, understanding that. There's a shortage of firefighters, right? We have a shortage of electrical workers and contractors. We have the schools that do that kind of thing, CR does a great job um. With, you know, construction and and apprenticeships and and giving people those skills. That's where we have to focus, right? And I think as the, as the development like with renewables ramps up. That opportunity will be like, what do we, we need those people, we can't have them all come from out of the area. Let's start training them, you know, the Shots Energy Lab is focused on the the technology, but. It'll all come, start getting tied together, like, oh, now we need the work, you know, and so we gotta start training them for these. High skilled yet blue collar, you know, jobs. Um, that all starts to happen. It all starts to fall into place as the money rolls in and there's. Several hundred million dollars just sitting there waiting for us to, to start this, um. So it will happen and, and there's a lot of people thinking about it, you know, um. A lot of, uh, industry is already trying to figure it out because we know we're gonna have a shortage, just like we have a shortage of healthcare workers, you know, like what do we do with that? Right? Um, I hear about it all the time and it's like, we gotta get them trained and, and called, you know, Cal Poly used to. Have a program and, and, and ramping back up, so. Those things will happen and, and it's a matter of like, how do we steer our kids into that, right? Like I, I'm gonna be talking in some Eureka High classes next week. Just to talk about like, what is it, what is, what goes on in politics and what do, you know, how do, how do we get kids involved, not just in. In their community, but be thinking about those careers that might, you know, provide them with a decent living. That's really important to me.
Speaking of that, your opponent seems very heavy on building up the future generation. Uh, which. I don't think anybody disagrees that the future generation or the future gen- uh, they're here, they're just, you know. Tiny children right now. And, and there's no doubt that, you know, think about the children. I think everyone can agree, yes, think about the children, but we do have, you know, as you said, we have an aging population. And a lot of people are gonna need, uh, their, people are living longer, they're gonna need those jobs as well and having. The ability to retrain people. I know people who are, uh, not much older than me who. Worked in a. You know, in one type of field and they have no sense of technology, they have no sense of. The modern world outside of what they've always done. And they're retiring from those positions. There's a lot of military people around my age who have done their twenty years, who are, um. You know, of people who are retiring from that first job, who, let's face it, because of the crazy inflation, what they get, they might get. You know. Some benefits from that first job, but it's not a lot to keep them over. It's not a lot to say buy a house or anything like that. That's just. Fair minimum living. So what, how would you? Incorporate them and would they even be seen compared to? You know, a, an eighteen-year-old that's fresh faced and willing to learn versus somebody who might be a little more grizzled.
And that's. That's, I mean, I. That's a really tough question, right? How do we? People that still wanna work or still need to work, how do we keep them, um, keep them going, you know, and I. It, it's the same that I, I treat them differently as, as a young person. Let's figure out training programs, you know, get them back in the school, get them, you know, uh. They're still valuable human beings and, and a valuable workforce, especially just the knowledge, you know, that those people have, I think. So much of what we, um. How we think of, um. Our older population, I, I'm, I'm saying, you know, discourage that, um. People don't, uh, look to them in, in high regard. Like I always thought of my, my grandparents, it's like. I wanted to, you know, glean so much from what, from their knowledge, from their years of experience and. Those people are, are valuable and I, I think they should have the same opportunities as young people. How do we get them back involved? We really need people, um, to take care of our elderly too, like how do, you know, there's opportunities there, right? I mean. Maybe not, you know, lifting people and whatnot, but, um, to care for, for all of our population. Um. I just actually, it's funny, I, I was talking to some friends on, um, recently and then both, uh, retired from Coast Guard. And they had used their GI bills to, to get their wives into a new career, which is nursing, actually, both of them. I thought that was so interesting. You know, these guys retired. They're still working, but they use those resources to, to change careers for their, for their spouses. I was like. How brilliant, you know, like how can we also do something like that? And those are state issues, like larger state issues and, and federal issues, like, you know, city council, how, how do we deal with that? Um, I serve on the Board of Directors for Cal Cities, uh, so I represent, well, the Redwood Empire from. Port of Point Arena to, to Crest City. And that's one of those things I'm always thinking about, like how do we push policy at the state level to help us locally? Um, and those are the kind of things that we're always trying to push, like how do we bring money into the city so that we can do things like training? Do things like keep our hospitals, um, you know, running. Um, which is a huge issue a- across the state, hospitals closing in rural communities. So I try and use that platform to help the city and, and help us figure out how do we benefit? Our youth and, um, our, our, our older workforce. And it's super interesting to try and do that.
So we're kind of near the end of. Of your time here, though you've got five minutes, I do kind of wanna bring it, uh, or hope that you would focus. You, you get to say whatever you want for the next few minutes. It's your time to kind of. Talk about what you'd like listeners on KZZH ninety-six point seven LPFM, uh, you know. What you would like them to take with them when they walk away or those watching our, our TV channels, um, on our TV channels here at Access Humboldt. Just what you want them to take away, though I do kind of want to localize a bit more because we've been talking more of a, uh. I do like the holistic perspective that you have. I will say that's a, that's very appreciative. It isn't just. One specific spot. I hate potholes, that's. Feeling a pothole isn't gonna save the world or the economy, but it will make me happy, just saying, just saying, it will make me very happy if all the potholes were just filled. If I just drove once and didn't hit a single pothole, well, I, I think I'd just burst into sunshine and rainbows. Um, it, it'd be amazing, it would, I, I don't think I would, okay, I will stop that rant and, but let's bring it back to more of a local thing because Ward Four has some very specific issues. There's, uh. The Bridge District, which is amassed with a lot of, of, a very large compared to the population, houseless. Population, there's, uh, those with a lot of substance issues. And there's a particular house in the area that gets a lot of complaints for it, uh, which. Belongs to the Arcata House Partnership, uh, then there's, of course, the whole. The rest of the road down to, you know, Sequoia Park and all, all of that. There's all these little neighborhood things that are. Much smaller than the, the more. The, like, there's, there's a large thing. I, I don't wanna miss the forest for the trees, but let's face what people will vote on, they'll vote on the trees. And so I just kinda hope you take them into consideration as you get your, your final four minutes.
Uh, I could talk for fifteen about all those, but. Darn it, um. Yeah, you know. It, it's hard to, to localize problems that we've, that we face, I mean. That's our number one issue, is trying to address them, um, when they're, they're much more broader in scope, the whole, we'll see approach that you just said. But let, let's just start with, you know, the Bridge District and kind of the issues that aren't just, um. Found in, in one area, right? I mean, we talk about. Um, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, potential crime, you know, people parking, you know, uh. Beat up vehicles and throwing all the trash out in the street. I've heard all that. I, I, I attend the Bridge District meetings. Um, and talk to those folks and I totally understand, it's frustrating, right? And. I think with the most recent Supreme Court decision and the, the kind of the governor's, um, you know, uh. Push to, for us to, for local agencies to take care of things, I think you will see some changes. I think. You'll see a camping ordinance, um, coming very soon. When, um, you know, Betty's Village is, is finished and, and we built a lot of, um. You know, transitional housing. And at some point, it's gonna be, listen, here's your, here's a place for you to go. But you keep, you go there, but you can't live in the weeds, you know, and I don't, don't mean to sound, it's not a callous thing, I don't think at all, but. You can't be there anymore. You can't be living in public spaces and, and, and spreading your, your, your stuff all over our, our streets, sidewalks. Trails. I've experienced it just like everybody else. So that's gonna happen and, um. That'll be a huge benefit to not only the Bridge District, but the whole community at large, you know, mental health and substance abuse. That's, we see, everybody sees it and, you know, just coming back from Long Beach. Cal Cities Conference saw it there, all over the place, right? And Eureka's done more than most cities. I mean, we have uplift, right? Where we're out. You know, I see somebody on the streets that I, a new person, uh, and I, and I hate to see women on the streets and I'm like. Hey, can you go talk to her, you know, go down and talk to her. Um, you know, we have, uh, you know, Jacob Rosen, who's our mental health, um, head of our, kind of our mental health program. And so he's out contacting people to deal with those mental health crises that we, we see on the streets, which we, you know, aren't. Um, special in that sense, it's every city. So we've developed programs fun, you know, funded and, and expanding of our, uh, uh, mental health and, you know, things like. CSAT and, um. You know, we're working on that and I, I think we're doing a good job is, you know, it's, we always wanna do more, but the resources. You know, we're, we're slowly building resources to address those things, you know, keeping them out of our hospitals and, um. Trying to find a way to, uh, you know, deal with mental health. Um, and not tr- treat it like it's an emergency business. So we're doing that and I'm, I'm proud to say we, we being a part of that for those programs. And again, everything takes time, but it, it's happening. And then I think in the next year or two, you're gonna see some drastic changes, not only with. The camping issues and, in our greenways and gulches and green spaces, but. Um, the mental health issues are, are getting, getting a really hard, um, look and, and we're, we have the people that are doing it, so happy about that. And I probably have to say, cause you brought it up, you know, the roads issue, you know, we're, we have a whole list of roads that I've been talking to people about. As I walk around, um, you know, we got a whole. There are the High Party Roads are getting done this year, Myrtle Avenue is getting done. Um, I think it's Harris or Henderson, like we're working on them. And it takes time when, when there was thirty or more years of nothing happening, right? Not investing in our roads, Measure H is doing that. So it'll happen and I'm always fighting for more, for more funds from the state, like. Help our communities, we're, we're the economic engines of the state. We're working on it, um, there's a million other issues, right? Um.
There are a million other issues, so I, I just wanna thank you for being on the show.
Okay, thank, thank. Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
I, I appreciate you taking this time and being here and, uh. Lucky isn't here, but thank you as well to Lucky for being on here. Everybody go vote. Um, don't, I mean, I do care how you vote, but it's none of my business how you vote, but please go vote. If you haven't yet, uh, go do it now. If you're not registered, they can register you, you. Up to the day of, so please, please go and vote. It's very important, have your voice heard. Otherwise I don't wanna hear it from you, so. Kind of true. That's all the time we have today. Thank you again to our guests. We'll be back next week with another Thursday Night Talk. If you have topics or suggestions for the show, please email us at kzzh@accesshumboldt.net. And reminder, the show replay is Friday evenings at eight P M. right here on KZZH ninety-six point seven. You can watch the show on Access Humboldt's YouTube channel, just look up Access Humboldt or. Thursday Night Talk or my name if you want, you can find some fun things on the internet with that. Thank you so much for joining us, uh, also catch us on. Channel twelve, I believe, sometimes channel eleven, depend, depending on how our traffic person is feeling. On Access Humboldt's channel. All right, have a good night and I will see you next Thursday.